Okay. Now I don't know. If my audio is working. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Testing. Testing one, two, three. Okay, I'm gonna try this one more time today. And very frustrating because I had come through this whole thing of showing how I make this roof. And somehow it got, it didn't get recorded on the live stream. So what I thought I would do is just go ahead and move this back. And kinda show again what I did. What I basically did was I started off by drawing my rafter. And this is two by ten. So that's nine and a quarter. And this is a twelve, twelve pitch roof. So it's basically a forty-five degree angle here. And my seat cut, on your seat cut, you want it to be basically as wide as the wall. Because you wanna get a good connection here. We're gonna come back and put metal clips here when we're through framing. So we want that to be nice and secure. And also, on your rafter tail, you want it to be twenty-two and a half. If you want a twenty-four inch overhang, it should be twenty-two and a half inches. And I'm just drawing the rafter here, I'm not drawing the facing board. Because the main purpose behind these drawings is for the framing to build it. So what you'll have is, your rafter will have a cut on the end of it. Let's just go back and I'll show you the help, what the rafter kinda looks like by itself. We'll come over here one point five. And we'll just bring all this back. As if it were a rafter. Cause what I do is I start out with a rafter. You see, and then I just expand the whole thing. To cover the whole roof. So basically, what I've got are two rafters. I draw the two rafters first. And I literally do this for our framing, while we're framing. Sorry about all the zooming. If I put my cursor over here and I turn the wheel, it goes faster than if I'm on something close to me and I turn the wheel. So I know people complain about that, but I don't have a lot of control over that. But anyway, so up here. What you would have is. A, where am I gonna get my, here we go, get my construction line from down here. Oh, no wonder, here we go. Up here, what you're gonna have is. An LVL. Because the code does not allow us, am I editing this? No, I need to get in edit mode. The code does not allow us to let the rafter. Come down past. The bottom of this rafter right here cannot come down past the ridge board. And so, in an effort to use some sort of standardized lumber, I've got a fourteen inch LVL that I'm using. Okay? So I'm drawing all this stuff. And I'll go back later, when I'm actually doing rafter plans. When I'm actually doing the roof, you know, the rafter framing plan. I'll go back to kinda this mode where I'm drawing individual building members. But for now, what I'm trying to do is get the overall shape of the roof figured out. So that I can figure out where my dormer walls stop and start. And so what I'll do is, let me delete this construction line. That's part of the group, isn't it? Yep. And so what I'll do is I'll take my push-pull tool and I'll bring that whole thing over. To give me a roof volume so that I can see where things are working out. Like that. How these dormers are gonna work out. Hey, let's see if YouTube's working. It's working, but I had to go back and look at my settings in OBS. Because. I just realized that my little thingy, my cam cam is, cam cam, cam cam was just here. A few minutes ago. One of my YouTube friends. Okay, so that's working. Just had to check right quick. What's been happening is, and the reason I have so many parts, is because the stinking video keeps freezing up on me. So, I had to backtrack there. I had, I was going through all this, drawing this, drawing that, and I looked up and it wasn't recording. So I was really, really kinda frustrated. And thank you YouTube. And I know it's not YouTube's fault, it's whatever settings I was using. I had to go into my OBS, my open broadcaster software and try to figure it out. But anyway, so what I was actually in the middle of trying to describe was how. How we'll have knee walls here. And it looked to me like on the drawing that the owner wanted forty-eight inch knee walls here. Which kinda makes sense because that's a piece of sheet rock. And it's kind of a, it's kind of a split the difference between not wasting floor space. And so. What I would have is. This wall. Basically what it amounts to is. This wall would. Basically stop. And at the roof line. Now, there's a detail here I'm not talking about, and that is, the thickness of this roof. Wherever, wherever it's exposed to the room has to be twelve inches thick. Because if you're gonna use typical insulation. Because you have to have an R thirty-eight in your ceiling. So to get that, you need twelve inches. So these two by eights will have to come back and further them down. So I need to keep that in mind. When I'm doing this. And I just realized that. Is that a line? I should be able to do that and then, yeah, maybe take that and move that over, you know, like that. So basically. That's one nice thing about the push-pull tool on SketchUp. Once you kinda draw this line to isolate this part of the wall, you can push it back. And as soon as it touches the other face, let go, it'll basically delete that part. So now I can kinda go back and forth and delete that. That line. And turn my roof framing off. And now I can tell. Where I would have like. Walls coming this way. Which would be four and five eighths this way. We're just gonna call it four and a half. Four and nine sixteenths. Ah, now you see. This is where I ran into trouble before. I had that black screen come up. And the picture froze after that. So I'm trying to keep an eye. On that now. That's at one point, that's where only, the last time I tried this, the. The screen froze up. In other words, you could, what in the world? What in the world? If y'all wanna hear me cuss. I keep getting these black screens and I think, I think it's not working, but apparently it keeps working. So anyway, I would have a wall, a four foot tall wall right here. That four feet, yep. And I could. Take out that, and then I can come over here and build another. And this is where it kinda gets tedious because. Building all these little pieces of walls instead of just like big chunks at a time. But no big deal. But you can kinda see why I have to do that. If I turn, if I turn back on the roof, you can see that part of the wall can't stick out of the roof. So that has to be built at forty-eight inches like that. Now I'm gonna have a dormer on this side. Let me delete some of these construction lines, they get on my nerves after a while. These construction lines are in that group right there. So I gotta turn that group on, delete them, and click outside the group to get rid of them. But you can kinda see how this is starting to take shape. And if you look at the earlier videos, you'll see here. How I was talking about bringing this little chunk of floor over, but it won't do any good because, well. Now I'm thinking it will do good because. This needs to. This does need to come over here. Like that. Because. This wall. This wall's gonna need to continue over here. Yep, like that. So that our little attic space continues in there. So that's gotta be like that. So, but again, this is why. Why we do this, why I do this. Okay, now, I just had that freeze up a little bit, let me check. It's sad that I have to keep going back and forth, dang it, to check. But anyway. Okay, so now, let me check my plan. It may be, one of the things I may need to look into is. Going back and forth from like in my PDF viewer. I've got to go look at the plan. And I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but I got a sneaky suspicion. Now, one thing I'm gonna suggest to the owner. This situation here, where this is so close. Let me see if I can show you that on the elevations. If I zoom out, I can show you, I can go quicker. That is right here. Right here, that little wall. I honestly don't see, well, I see he's got this dormer lined up with, when I say he, I'm talking about the architect or she. Has got this dormer lined up with this window. But, so let's go look at the first floor plan. To see if there's anything we can do to fix that, if desired. One of the things I recommended to the owner was that we move this. Make this closet, well, actually what I recommended was moving his walk-in closet to here. And moving this whole fireplace thing over to the left. Which would allow us to move this window more towards the center. If not in the center of this section right here. And then actually put the dormer in the center. Let's go back to our second floor plan for a second. See, the bedroom. I think I can suggest something here that'll be a lot. A lot better, because this is a little tiny bedroom. I think I can make this bedroom bigger. I'm gonna, no, I'm not gonna shoot the dog, but I really am thinking about it. The other thing I just noticed too is that this toilet would be better against this four foot wall right here. Than the shower being against this four foot wall. So I can, I can kinda, I'm used to building this stuff. I can see this stuff in three dimensions by looking at the plan. And so the shower, he's got the, they got the tallest thing, which is the shower up against this four foot wall. Which is right here. When really the shower should be over here and the toilet should be over there. Cause as you're sitting down, you're sitting down, your head's gonna be lower anyway. And I'll show, show that in a minute. Or when I get there. So what I'm gonna recommend is that, actually these dormers line up, that's what I'm gonna recommend. That is what I'm gonna recommend. And then we'll figure out. So I'm gonna turn off my roof. That's not my roof. We'll turn off my roof for a second. And I'm gonna draw myself a construction line here. Going over here, let's see where I am. Still working. Any comments? Nope. And I'm going to actually. They have the dormer eleven feet, five and a quarter. La, 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 la. I can't even sing. La, 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 la. La, 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 la. Am I still broadcasting? Probably shouldn't be, should I act like a ding dong? I'm gonna make this twelve feet. And I'll just suffer the repercussions if that ain't right. I'm on the outside, yep. Because. And how far back end did these walls come? Cause I know I'm gonna be coming out the same. Four feet, five and a half. Four feet, five point five. That's one thing I like about. SketchUp is that you can mix your feet in, feet in decimal inches. Like I don't have to type out one slash two for a half inch, I can just type in point five. So there's some construction lines, let's see if we can draw our rectangles in here. And for now, I'm just gonna. Draw these out. To there. Let's see, that wasn't right. This should've just gone straight out. This is the only part of the wall that's gonna be. Let's see, the other thing I just realized too is I need to be, I need to be drawing this in. Let me just back up for a second. I need to be drawing this in this group. Now. Let's do this again, do it right this time. I'm just gonna draw these out there for now. And draw me a wall here. It's weird. Feel like I'm not, I'm not on the same plane. Let's just start over, sometimes you just gotta start, start over. Why is that not? Is that why I'm not? Sometimes you find that your construction lines are not on the same plane for some reason. And now I don't know why, why I was doing that. I need to edit this, I need to put these walls together. So what I may do is just. Draw me some new construction lines. Because the, since those construction lines. Are not. Now let's try it. Now it's working good. Well, I was trying to snap to construction lines that were in, not in my group. So they were faded out. I can still use them as references, but they don't, they didn't seem to wanna work. As well, obviously, as construction lines in my. So I know, let's see, well, these walls are not gonna be as tall. These walls are only gonna be forty-eight inches. So I can bring them up forty-eight. Forty-eight. Bring that up and reference that one. And then these are gonna be. Why that didn't come up together, I don't know. I guess I didn't delete the little line between them. These. These walls should be as tall as those. And I don't like it when these faces get reversed. That's one thing that's annoying. And I know it's my fault, it's probably the way I drew the wall, but still. Still annoying. So I gotta grab all these faces. And reverse them to make them look the way they should. Very annoying. My daughter, Ally, wrote a song one time, it was "I'm Annoying". And it was back when I was telling her, she was acting annoying in the car one time. And. So her song went something like, "I am annoying, I am annoying, I am annoying." And it was cute, but. Those will go back like that, and then this will. Am I still on the line? Yep. Any questions? Nope. Probably a good thing, get this thing done. Alright, so. Let's turn this one little face back here. So now you're wondering, not really, but. Get all this stuff cleaned up, there we go. Now, do we have any construction lines out there we need to get rid of? Don't like, don't like my drawing all cluttered up with construction lines. So I'm gonna get rid of all these. So. Only thing I haven't done yet is, is figure out these little angled walls on this side. So we'll turn my roof back on. And. Figure out the best way to do this. Figure out the best way to do this. I think the best way... Is just to pull it, oops. Should've left that line on there. For the time being... I'm just gonna go ahead and pull these in. And then strike a line on them. Wherever the roof intersects. Like that, and I can just zap them. Oops. And I need to get rid of this line first. Because the whole thing won't go away. There. Now I've got my two dormers, this is one I'm gonna recommend. This dorm because you see there's more space here. And it's nice and cement, it's nice and neat, cause it lines up with this other one. But, this is the kinda benefit you have, uh, to using, you know, to doing your model, you know, designing in 3D space instead of 2D space, is that you can see all the consequences of your actions as you go. So here is a... This is another interesting... Thing too, because, because these, let me turn, get out this... Uh, because... Because this part steps down. I don't think that's gonna be a big deal, I'm gonna recommend that we just leave it like that. Either that or run this on down to meet. But, the cool thing... About this now, is now that I have kind of a, um... Yes it is, do you know Pete? Or did you just hear me say Pete in the other video? Um... Bill Rock. "I'm glad YouTube seems to be working, I had to go back and fix my settings." When I say YouTube, I mean, my open broadcaster settings seem to be working, I guess is what I should say. But, what's kinda cool now is that I can take this roof, before I cut out these dormers, and I can copy it. And I can set it here. And then, uh, rotate it. Let's see. Yep, it's gonna be gabled this way. Like that. And you, you can start to see how the roofs will intersect. And, so what I'll have to do though is... I'll have to... Let me look at my elevations here, I think that... Yeah, that gable is based on... That. Yep. So I need to move that part over. What I could do is select, dang it, I got Barrett's Nance. I was telling the story earlier, Barrett left a... Left a banana peel in the shop, and I found it, but I didn't find it for like a day. And, um... I was gonna turn that into a group. Make group, so now I can, since I just made that geometry a group, now I can move it, uh, to here. Oops. Hmm, that's odd. Thought it, thought it would let me do that. Thought it wouldn't let me do that. Did I grab too much? Oh, I know what it's doing, it doesn't like the fact that I'm messing up the face, but I can still... That goes there. And then... I just, what I wanted to do is copy my ridge board, that's what I was trying to do. Because what I'm gonna do now is take that ridge board and move it. Trying to get to where I just grab certain stuff, but not others. It's gonna be twelve inches. Yep. But what I can do is copy... I'm just gonna go ahead and explode this now. That's what I'm trying to do is move, or actually copy that ridge board and put it. Down here. And you'll see what I'm doing in a minute. It'll be obvious now, but it will be in a second. Um... Maybe overcomplicating this. Yeah, I think I was trying to just overcomplicate it. I think the smartest thing to do is just... Copy just this little piece right here. Keep grabbing the wrong side. Need to grab that side. There we go. Now I can clean all this junk. Now that I know where my ridge board goes. What am I doing? Just a junkie. Should've just redrew all this junk, why am I, why am I putting myself through all this? All I need to do is take this... I need to get this... Just go ahead and grab this. There we go. Yeah, I should be able to just delete all this upper, upper stuff. And I'm gonna start to connect all these lines back together. It'll start to make more sense. Cause I want this to come all the way up. To here. Let's see, but, the ironic part is that it does not go back to there. Hmm. It only goes back to here. This part steps back again. So, it's a little complicated, not complicated, just, uh, time consuming to do all the drawing work. So anyway, you can start to see... Hmm. I think... If this wall, if this wall lined up, which does it? Does that line up? Nope, it doesn't. If this wall lined up, this roof line could come on through. So this part has to be, you know, I gotta draw a ridge in the center of this. There, coming down this way. Oh, it's getting to be dinner time. But, this is the kinda thing I gotta work out. This is the kinda thing, and this will be, you know, there will be, um, a rafter. If I copy this... That... And that. There'll be a rafter coming up like this. And why is that acting that way, that's weird. Uh... Oh, it's probably stuck to something up here. Why is it doing that? Is it glued? It acts like it's, it won't, it doesn't wanna... Oh, it's up against that, that is the odd part, why is that? Oh, it is up against it. I just gotta get it. Oh my gosh, what in the world? Uh, you can't tell what I'm talking about, but it doesn't wanna go... It doesn't wanna go where I wanna put it. I need it to go right there at that corner. See if I, see if I move it out here and I copy it. That is odd. That is freaky. Well, anyway. So that'll be, there'll be a rafter there, I'll have to go in and see why that was acting that way. Um... And then all these overhangs will come out, like this will come out, um... Two more feet. Like that. Except, I'll do those lines across there, let's get rid of that thing. And let's go up here and get rid of these lines, making me messy. Making my thing messy. Cause now I could pull this out twenty-four inches and go down here and connect these. And that makes it look more real. Cause we wouldn't cut a bird's mouth out of the bar rafter, which is hanging over. But, in any event, what I'll do then, then what I'll start to do is I'll start to draw in the valleys, where these meet, there'll be a valley that goes up here. Like that. Wherever, um... Wherever it meets with that. My battery's running low, did I unplug something? My battery's running low, did I unplug something? Things should start working right today. Hmm. Anyway, where was I, I was kinda showing how. That valley starts to fill in. So this roof will come over, I gotta go look at my, so there would be a true va- a true valley here. Or you can build, you can build this roof just like this, all the way through. And then set this on top of it, you just have to decide if, if the spaces are gonna be used. Um. One way works better than the other, the way building a true valley opens it up more inside, it'll open that space up. But if it's just gonna be used as attic space, there's no reason to spend the money to do that, cause it's a lot of labor to frame these valleys and stick build them, cause every rafter has to be cut a different length on both sides of the valley. And um, you can imagine if we build it this way, all these rafters could be the same length, they're all cut the same length, you build this one first, uh, then this one comes over and gets built on top of the other one. So, anyway, just um. Trying to get, get, get this thing moving along, and I will get it further down the road and show some progress. Uh, next time, I'll hope, I'll have the whole roof done, uh, probably by Monday afternoon, cause I'm meeting Pete on uh, on Tuesday. And try to get this pretty much roughed out enough to ask questions then, so. Thanks a lot guys, and I appreciate you watching.